Good evening. We are the City of Marshalltown City Council at the Council Chambers. The council agenda has been distributed. We're at 10 West State Street. Today's date is October 28, 2019, and the time is 5:30. I give notice to the public as follows that the Mayor and Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. If you wish to speak, you are required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to present your remarks to three minutes or less so that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the Mayor and City Council and not to any Consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Because we've been called to the order, I now invite those who are able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Goudy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum, and now it's time for the Council and Administrator comments. Should we start with the years of service?
Yeah, we can start with that.
Okay.
That will actually start with me. Tonight, we are celebrating five years of service for Fire Chief Dave Ryerson. I was not here when Dave got hired, but I don't think the City of Marshalltown could have made a better choice than a fire chief. It's seeing him working with his department through the building process and working to build a team, not just a department, has been something that I'm in admiration of, and I continually learn from Dave in his leadership skills and the number of books and seminars that he brings forward to all of us. And so, I want to thank Dave for five years of service, and just to remind him, his evaluation is forthcoming. So...
(laughing)
(applause)
Your evaluation has to be good now, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
Great. Thank you.
Nice.
(applause)
up. Both chiefs are pretty excited to give that tour. They've been well attended. If you haven't had a chance to see the new fire and police safety building, please take that chance. It's really worth the effort, and thank you, voters, for putting that in, and I know that Chief Ryerson really enjoys that, given the tour. We have more years of service to be recognized?
Yes, Chief Tupper.
And Chief Tupper can do that.
Come on up, sir. Come on up. This is where you give your speech.
It is.
Yeah, we still have a little timer.
(laughing) Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. It's my honor and pleasure to be here tonight with Officer Rod Whitmore, who's celebrating 30 years with the Marshalltown Police Department. I have no idea where your evaluation is, Rod, but your supervisor's in the back. I'm sure he's working on it. It's on my desk, he said, so I'll take a look at it. Rod has done a lot of things for us over 30 years. It's been my honor and pleasure to get to know Rod over the last eight years, and I really appreciate everything he does for us. Currently, he's serving as our School Resource Officer at the high school. How many years now, five?
Four.
Four, okay. And he does a great job in that role, and that's a very important role for us, and it's not a role that is for every police officer. I know it's something that I could not do. It's a tough job, and he does a great job at it, and the school district's really happy with him and the work that he does. And they're so happy that I hope Rod will quit talking about retirement and maybe stick around for a while yet. But Rod's also been a defensive tactics instructor for us and has been somebody that I can rely upon when I have a question, when I need something. And what's really cool about Rod is he's one of those guys that he sometimes senses when I might be having a bad day, and Rod will call me up and say, "Hey, chief, how are things going?" And not all of my employees do that, and it's something that I always appreciate. And he'll also tell me what he thinks, and that's something I really appreciate as well. So congratulations on 30 excellent years, and here's to at least 10 more, I hope. (applause)
You got her photo, Mike?
I do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next item is the consent.
One announcement that I'd like to make under...
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
I forgot to ask if anybody else had any, too.
So, it was actually, it was posted today, so those who received the notifications of our council agenda should have gotten the notice that we'll be having a special meeting at 5:00 PM tomorrow here in Council Chambers to approve the bid that was, the low bid that was received for the renovation of Veterans Memorial Coliseum, and items eight and nine that are on tonight's agenda under resolutions will not be considered tonight and will be on tomorrow's agenda.
Thank you. Does anyone up here have any other comments from the Council? I fell down on my knees and did not have anybody to feed tonight for their good community service, but I would like to let people know that we had some happy news in the family. Our younger daughter got married a week ago last Saturday, and older daughter was married earlier in the year and is having a baby in January. So, life is good at the Greer household. Let's go on to the consent agenda then, if we might. Is there a motion to approve it first?
So moved.
Second.
Well, let's call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Madam Clerk, would you read those items for the record, please?
Approve the council minutes for October 14th and the bill list in the amount of Appoint Heidi Hogan, David Shelton, and Calissa Thurston to the Building Board of Appeals. Approve the July 2019 monthly financial statements. Approve a new true-term license for Devic Services. Resolution approving a contract with Frank Swanson for the final commission of a public art project at the Police and Fire Building. Resolution to named depositories establish maximum deposit amounts and identify positions authorized to conduct business on behalf of the City of Marshalltown.
Thank you. Very good. We're on to the next item, category G, which is reports.
We have an update on the airport hangar and terminal design with the Marshalltown Aviation and Clapseto Garber.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is Mike Bearden with Clapseto Garber Associates. In, I believe it was June, you approved a contract for us to work with the city and the airport to develop some concepts for a terminal building and a hangar project. We started that project probably, it was about August. We did a grant application for the state for DOT funding, and we wanted to see the results of that, which we were successful in that. So, in August, we started the concept review. We figured it would take about 90 days, probably have something to you by Thanksgiving. And then, the City Administrator Jessica said, "You're kind of on the agenda for Rotary at the end of October, and so, nothing like a good deadline to expedite the process." So, with that, we did, and we did share with Rotary last Tuesday with great, everyone liked that. Steve is here to help with answering any questions you have. Well, I'll kind of give you some, just where we went through in the concepts we did. We started with kind of a blank piece of paper, and we went through about three or four innovations of where the building should be. What this shows is the existing terminal building in the red to be removed, and then the maintenance facility that Steve uses in the hatched to the right of that, and then the larger hangar would replace that as option, option three. So, pretty much the same location, just a bigger hangar and a replacement and reconstruction of the new terminal building. Number three was, we went through quite a bit of discussion on whether we should keep that facility for Steve to use, and he really would like to do that. And it's not a 2020 building, but it's still very functional. So, we looked at an opportunity to move the building to the right, the 120 by 20 hangar, and then still reconstruct the terminal building essentially in the same location and the same size. So, that was number two. Number thir-
Can I ask? Did you say the existing terminal is in the red? Is that correct?
Uh...
Red, Danny. I can't read that little time print there.
Let me back up here if I can.
The existing, or it would be the proposed? Construction? Yeah, well, in this, in number two, the red is both the existing and the future.
Okay.
Same location. In number 1A, you can see the hatch to the right of the red. That's the existing terminal building. The building to the right of that is his maintenance facility. So, we'd be able to keep that. We kept the, but we also be able to get the, one of the things that we're really concerned about was having 50 feet of separation between the new terminal building and the existing facility. There are some code regulations that are a lot easier to deal with if you have a 50-foot separation, so we were aware of that. And then, we put the building to the left of that, and you can kind of see how that all fits there. And then, those are, you can kind of notice, the terminal building in all three of these was almost exactly the same. Same square footage, same shape, and so, then we said, "Well, let's try something completely different." So, again, we kept the existing maintenance facility, removed the hatch terminal building, moved the big, bigger hangar further to the left, and then gave more of a square-shaped terminal building. Same square footage, and we still got that 50-foot separation, so we don't, we can still deal with the code issues. And it lets you kind of put in a parking lot for that. And so, we really, really kind of like this one, and we kind of developed that even further. When you take it all apart, you can see now how it fits in with the existing entrance, because that entrance road is not in real good shape, and so, this would eliminate part of that and give you a new parking. That would be very easy to expand either to the right or the left of that drawing we have there. And you can see the terminal building fits in there nicely with that. You've got a little bit of expansion of the ramp, which there's funding for, for the blue hangar. One of the things we will have to do as part of this is that yellow box is electrical vault. Existing right now is right in the middle of where we're trying to put all this. It's not in real good shape, so this would be a good opportunity to move that and get that replaced. And sequencing, it makes it a lot easier to be able to get the new hangar and the new terminal building built before we have to do all the demo of the existing one. So, part of the issue was, what are you going to do during, during construction? How are you going to, how are you going to keep access to that? So, this helps with that. Any question? We have some renderings. I'll go on, but any questions so far? Okay. The really important things, and we spent quite a bit of time on this, working with Steve and Justin, we need the lounge and lobby area. The public restrooms, that was one of the very, very important things. There just is not, there's only two stalls in each. That just doesn't work very well. The airport manager's office needs to be separated but visible. The pilot's office and the lounge, they need to be there but kind of out of the way. Conference room for some meetings, some mechanical and storage, and then the building access, both from the apron side and the land side. So, here's how we develop that. Again, you, on the left, you can kind of see, it's that same drawing where you've got the hangar and the terminal building. Then, we blow, blow the terminal building up itself. You can see from the parking lot, you can see right on through there to the apron. So, you can come right in from the parking lot and go right on through. You've got restroom just as you come in. If you're coming in from the apron, the restrooms are very visible. The reception area is right as you would come in from the apron. The manager's office, you can see, there'll be glass there, so you'll be able to see right into his office from there. He will have glass, so he can see out on the apron and be able to see what's coming at him. Conference room kind of in the back. Lounge concession, one of the things that Steve was very adamant about is get the concessions away from out in the lobby, because it's kind of noisy, kind of irritating, so we got that kind of hidden away there. And then, one of the things we're working through on a code revision or code confirmation is, right now, we've got a vestibule that's taking a little bit of the space inside the big hangar building, but it's right behind where the doors will stack anyway, so you're not really going to lose any space. You have to be able to cut off the hangar from the terminal building. They say it has to be suitably cut off. If you don't, then you have to design the entire terminal building for the same code as the hangar. So, we're, again, trying to separate some of the code issues for some cost savings. Any questions for that? Then, with the architect, here are some of the renderings. This is kind of from the parking lot side. You can see the entrance coming in there, and you can see the apron. A little bit more of a overhead view. Now, from the other side, from the ramp, you can see a lot of glass, and you can see the perspective of the height of the terminal building versus the height of the hangar. The hangar, we're hoping to have like 28-foot doors. I mean, it's very tall, and so, you can't look really squatty, or it's going to look kind of silly. But some of that space in there will be used to conceal some of the HVAC systems. Instead of taking up space on the floor, we can put, whoops, we can put it above. So, it's not just extra space, it's utilized space. And there is, you were coming right from the runway coming in, you can see the perspective of the height. And to the left, you can see the existing building is there. And we will do a little bit of enhancements to that existing building to make it look Let me back up here. Is there any questions or thoughts on that? Let's give you a quick update on the funding. If you recall, the middle funding was the FAA funding for the hangar. It was about $605,000. The terminal building, we did apply for and received $150,000 of vertical infrastructure funding. That's the max that they will allow for our terminal building. And then, the exterior, your site improvements, we got another $320,000. So, there's your funding that's available so far. We hope to, if everyone's happy with the concept, the next step was we will go to FAA and see if we can get a little more funding to help with that vault relocation. That's a very eligible item. We think we can get some additional fund there. Schedule-wise, we're in concept right now. We'll spend the winter doing the design into spring, bidding it next spring, summer, and then construction either in the fall of 2020, depending on how the grants come in, the timing, or wait till spring of 2021. Any questions for either Steve or I?
What is the Marshalltown commitment to do this?
I'm sorry, sir. We can't take questions from the audience, because nobody can hear them through, it has to be through a microphone. And so, let me first ask if there are any questions up here, then I'll ask for comments of the public, but you'll need to go to the microphone.
Just one, Your Honor.
Yes.
I didn't see in the layout of the terminal building where the lounge and stuff was for the pilots.
Uh, there on the right, just above the conference room, there's the pilot's lounge.
How big are those rooms?
Oh, probably 15 by 18, something like that.
Similar size to what we have now.
Is it enough? I thought, I thought when we had our conversation, you wanted more.
The pilot's lounge should be sufficient here.
You're okay?
Should be enough.
Okay.
And for the public, the answer was that the pilot's lounge should be enough for the pilots.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments up here?
Just a comment. I commend you on your design. No flat roof. Slant to it. It shouldn't last.
I don't like those either.
I had a question about the concept. It seems like with the relocation, it will change the costs overall, so I wondered if you have an estimate of the new costs. I was especially interested in the parking lot moving from one place to another, because that looks expensive. Just curious.
Actually, we really feel we are, we are still within the cost estimate, because we're not tearing down on the buildings.
Yeah.
And you're building the two other buildings together, so you're not separating those. That would have cost more. So, and you're kind of trading some of the site work. So, we think we're okay. We have not done the detailed cost estimate, because we want to kind of get through this, but we think we're still fine.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions by the Consulars? If not, then if anybody from the public has a comment or question, please step to the microphone.
My name's John Catrin, and I live on South Third Avenue, and I have a very simple question. What is the Marshalltown...
What's your, what's your street address on South Third, sir?
Oh, 202 South Third Avenue.
Thank you. Okay.
Is the city commitment money for this?
I can answer that. It's the same budget information that we presented when you, you asked us to proceed. The hangar, if you recall, is 90-10 money, and so, we got about $600,000, but that was not for the big enough building. So, there was a, we needed about 1.2 million, so there's about $600,000 of additional funding there. And then, the terminal building is about a million, and you can see we got one and a half and three. You're probably, you've got about a million dollars here. You're going to have about 1.6 total additional. So, we're at about 2.6.
And roughly, the percentage of what the federal and state money is there going to handle for that?
Um, again, the hangar building will be the 605. We could have only had a match of 60,000, but that was not going to be, that would only get you about a $650,000 building, not big enough for what was desired. So, you're going to have about a 50-50 on that at about 1.2 million. And in the hangar, you're going to have about 450, so you're going to have about 550 in the terminal building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other public comment or questions?
(inaudible).
Okay. Thanks for the report.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I've got you here.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. On to report number two on the Aquatic Center.
We have the 2019 Aquatic Center report.
I won't go over everything, but as, from my perspective, it was a great summer at the pool. The weather was fantastic. We started out with, thinking we weren't going to have enough lifeguards to getting a whole lot more about the Fourth of July, so we had enough staff to get us through the summer. But if it wasn't for the broken glass and lazy river, I would say it was a perfect summer, but we had a few hookups. We learned a few things. Maintenance overall went very well, so the big thing that's going to highlight was that we, our revenue was $115,000 this year, which, based on the attendance, was a pretty high number, and I would equate that to, we allowed debit cards and credit cards to be used for admission, as well as in the concession stand. And the concession stand was probably $6,000 more than the averages of other years. So, people were using that, and probably when you're going to swipe your card, you're not going to do it for 50 cents, so let's just rack up to five bucks, make it worth, make it worth it. So, we saw families doing that. So, if there's any questions anybody has, but it was a great summer, and we're looking forward to making 2020 better.
Thanks. And you're Jeff Hubbard of the Park and Rec Department.
Sorry.
Just for the record and the public out there, I'm always surprised that more than three people watch this on TV.
I was just going to say, Your Honor, that my family and I really enjoyed it this summer, so...
Right.
Our kids are finally good enough swimmers, like, we feel like we can get out there more, so it was great.
We had a few hot weekends, too.
We went in the evenings usually. It's a lower price, and it's, you know, just enough, because we're not like, spend all day there. What's that?
And we were open in the evening.
And we were open. Yeah, it was nice.
Very good. Public comment?
Anna Wolvers, Marshalltown resident. Just to clarify, does that also include the rental of the AEA pool? Because I know that was added in addition to for like trainings or something as well.
And that's something, that's something separate, the only thing we were talking about in this report was the Family Aquatic Center.
Okay. Thank you. Other public comment or questions? Seeing no one raising or raising a hand, let's go on to item, oop, another hand raised.
John Catrin, South Third Avenue, 202. What were the costs for this pool?
It was in the memo, too, and it was 100, our costs were about $190,000, which was very similar to what they were in previous years.
Thank you. Other public comment or questions? Seeing no hands or anybody rising now, let's go on to item H, Resolutions. The first one, Madam Clerk.
Resolution approving a communication system easement with CenturyLink.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
That goes to Cahill. And discussion up here.
Just to let you know, this is related to actually some land that we own out by the airport, where there were some issues with maintaining, I believe, any telephone connection to some county residents, and so, CenturyLink basically need to go through our property to be able to run their line to provide access.
Has a clerk received any comments from the public?
I have not.
Is there any question up here or comments up here? Any public comment? Roll call.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Unable, please read the second resolution.
Resolution approving amended engineering services agreement for the 12th Avenue shared use path agreement for Clapseto Garber Associates, increase of $8,400.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
That was Lamer.
It was.
Thank you.
Discussion? Staff discussion.
My name is Jay Cook. I am the Assistant City Engineer, and basically, this engineering agreement is for amendment to the contract for them to redesign the 12th Avenue project, reducing it from an eight-foot down to a five-foot, which basically means they had to reproduce and reconstruct all of their easements for the properties. So, it is a agreement for $8,400, which will take the total design services up to $159,900.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the Consulars?
I got a question. You went from eight-foot to five-foot. What was that reduction?
The reduction?
Yes.
The reduction comes from the fact that we had already prepared all of the easements for the property based on an eight-foot trail. Now that we have gone down to a five-foot trail, all of those easements have to be reproduced and re, completely redesigned.
But what's the difference in cost to produce an eight-foot versus a five-foot?
For the sidewalk cost?
Yes.
I don't have an answer for that.
Well, that was asked a couple of meetings ago.
So, I don't think that they've gotten to the point of being able to estimate that at this point in time. They're still very much in the design phase at this point, and so, this is just basically the agreement to authorize them to change the, the design as the council had previously directed.
Will you at some time have that cost for us?
Yes. For me? Yes.
Other questions or comments up here? Public comment? Roll call.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next resolution, please.[1791.51]
Resolution approving amended engineering services agreement for the Fourth Street and Meadow Lane Storm Sewer Enhancements Project for HDR Engineering, increase of $48,725.
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Again, this is a amendment to an engineering agreement that actually started in 2017. We have completed up to about a 60% design. And we are actually at that point where we're going to be looking into property acquisition. That was not in the original agreement. And the HDR has contracted with Clapsettle to complete those easements. However, there will be timed public meetings and everything that HDR has to participate in. So between the two of them, we have an increase of cost of $48,725 for that work. That brings the total contract up to $195,025.
Questions or comments from the councilors?
Does that include the land acquisition?
It includes, yes, it includes the fees for land acquisition.
And the land itself?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
I got a question, but I'm trying to figure out how to ask it. So when this original plan to go clear to Meadow Lane was never engineered past Inglewood, is that fair to say?
Yes.
No.
I mean, we were looking at it in phases. And so that's why HDR was hired to basically complete the, the final phase of the work and to do that design.
Other comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Any public comments out there tonight? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Resolution carried. While you are able, would you read the next one?
Resolution approving the use of $7,000 of council designated local option sales tax to fund a portion of the vision Marshall Town's work on community messaging.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution first?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'll, I'll introduce this and then introduce Kylie Leisure with Vision Marshall Town to talk a little bit further about the request. One of the things that we have as a goal is to enhance our public image. And we'd specifically noted, one of the objectives in that goal was to partner with Vision Marshall Town and other organizations in efforts that, that work towards enhancing our public image. And so there is a community pride committee of Vision Marshall Town that has been working on some different things. Most notably, one of the things that you probably heard about the most was the, the tagline voting in the conversation. And so that, that kinda has taken a different turn, which is part of this request. And I'll turn it over to Kylie now to explain more of what's being requested.
Yeah, thanks, Jessica. Kylie Leisure, Vision Marshall Town Executive Director, 16 East Main Street. So we have the opportunity to use a vendor who has a lot of community marketing experience, working with communities that have similar demographics, size, workforce, housing needs, community pride issues. So we found a vendor who knew exactly what we were talking about when we said, "We want to increase our community pride. We need to take it to the next step. We have a lot of great things going on in the community. Do you have any experience doing this?" So we identified Ambridge as the vendor. And we talk a lot about quality of life initiatives. I know you guys talk a lot about quality of life initiatives. We talk about what that means and who that affects. Well, with a collaborative team of Jessica, Lynn Oberding, and I, we're looking at creating a community narrative, and that focuses on a lot of those quality of life initiatives. So we're looking at a theme, theme line of live, learn, and play. And so what does that mean in Marshall Town? And so we take those quality of life initiatives. We identify what our community narrative is, and we develop a message for Marshall Town. So I thought I'd use an example of what we're doing with this community narrative. And since Jeff has already been up here talking, I'm gonna use Park and Rec as the example. So we take this community narrative. We create just a one-page flyer. That's our first step. And on the front side of that flyer, it has this community narrative. And so it hits the highlights that we've worked through, and it talks about Marshall Town. And it basically sells Marshall Town. The backside is blank. So Jeff takes it and he puts Park and Rec information on there. He puts recruiting information on there. Let's say he's going to a career fair to recruit for a position. So he's got this flyer that has a community message on the front side because he's recruiting to Marshall Town as well as recruiting for the position. So he goes to the chamber, he runs a pull-up banner. So that's just a banner that's large in size. And the flyer and this banner have the same color scheme. They have the same message. It's the same design. It has the community tagline on it. So let's say that he hires somebody at this career fair. They're driving down the Center Street Viaduct. They look to the light poles where the banners, the old raggedy banners are hanging. We've got new ones, follows the same design, has the tagline, has that tone of voice, carries that message across. You look to the electronic billboard, and let's say we have an event coming up. So we have an, a promotion for this event. Same tone of voice, same color scheme, same connecting message. You can go into the chamber office to get a welcome packet because you're new to town. Same message, same narrative, same design. Come to City Hall and you'll see the same thing if you're looking for, like say you're gonna build a new garage. It would be the same packet. And so you'll see that the chamber and the city and Vision Marshall Town were all working together to create this narrative. And you have many touchpoints in the community. We're also looking at table tents for businesses. So you go to one of JP's restaurants and you'll have a table tent that will hit those key messages for that live, learn, and play. Let's see, did I hit all of them? Oh, and then also a direct mail piece. So looking at a quarterly direct mail piece, so just sending out four, hitting upcoming events. What's happened in the community? What's happened in the school district? Hitting those highlights for the community. So up until this point, we haven't had a single community message. We haven't had a single narrative. We have a lot of great things happening in our community, a lot of things that, great things that have happened. But we've struggled with hitting on what that key message is and developing that. And just as each one of you would kind of pick a different highlight to what you would talk about, that's why the three of us are putting our, our work together to come up with that key overall community message. And yeah, I, there's also the opportunity for the chamber and the city to think beyond. These were just our initial projects that we identified. But it, it goes much, much deeper. And I know they both already have some ideas, but this is just getting us started. And so we have the chance to change the perception of Marshall Town with this, with this marketing campaign. And so thank you for your consideration and helping us grow Marshall Town pride.
Thank you, Kylie. Any questions by the councilors or comments by the councilors?
Yeah, one question at least. Funding, you're requesting a $7,000. Is that an annual request?
No, that's just a one-time request. And thank you, we're also requesting that from the chamber as well.
Come next year, what happens?
Next year, the project will have already launched and you'll be seeing it all over the community. So it's just a one-time ask for this project.
Next year, you'll hopefully be seeing something happen behind us here on this wall, so.
You gotta be kidding. We asked for that to happen 10 years ago.
We were waiting until you didn't run again.
Well, you waited long enough.
Now we can afford it. Other councilor questions?
Are the only two funding pieces in the chamber and the city for 14,000 total? Or what's, is that the, is there a more to the scope of the funding?
Vision Marshall Town, we're picking up just a couple hundred of that. And then also the direct mailers, advertisements. Those have funding later after they're developed. So this is to develop the electronic versions. And so Vision Marshall Town will be, will be paying for those projects in the future.
Thank you. Other councilor questions or comments? Public. Get in the queue.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South Tenth Avenue. Vision Marshall Town is not a registered 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(6) or 501(c) anything. It has no taxpayer ID according to the records of the state. How does the city give money to a non-entity? How does a nonentity pay a business to do anything? Because in order to do that, you have to have a checkbook, which means you have to have a taxpayer ID. So I don't understand how you're gonna give them $7,000. We paid, we just did a deal with the Chamber of Commerce to manage our convention and visitors bureau and, and this type of image relationship stuff. And they're getting Hotel Motel Tax to do this. So why do we need another organization to do this? Marshall Town, Vision Marshall Town is tucked inside of a group called Marshall Town Main Street Partnership, which is a 501(c)(3) arm of the MCBD. MCBD is a chamber group 501(c)(6). Martha Lantai is funding Vision Marshall Town through donations to Marshall Town Main Street Partnership. So in my opinion, if the city council wants to give money to the Vision Marshall Town group, they need to do it through the Main Street Partnership, Marshall Town Main Street Partnership Organization. So this resolution seems to be not able to be completed because this entity doesn't exist.
Just, I was gonna say to address a few of those things, Mr. Eaton's correct that we do pay through the Marshall Town Main Street Partnership. But it's, Vision Marshall Town, Kylie, is going to be the one signing the agreement. And so that's where the, it is, it is funding that is going to Vision Marshall Town using the 501(c)(3) of the Main Street Partnership as the financial entity, which is how they're financially operate. The second part of that is the chamber's role. And that's a very good question, because it's one that we've had a lot of question about. And so I think this is not duplication. That's the thing to understand here. This is actually partnership and collaboration. And so the chamber has basically said that we don't want to create something that's wholly different from what Vision Marshall Town is starting, which is why they're being asked to fund 50% of the, the initial cost as well, or $7,000 of the initial cost as well. Because they want to basically use what is being created for that internal message and then take that and work with their own vendor to basically create that outside message, which we have contracted for them with in the Hotel Motel Tax Agreement. So there's actually a lot of collaboration that's been happening on this front to make sure that whether we're talking about Marshall Town internally through a mailer, a quarterly mailer to residents, or whether it's something that would be an advertisement in a, a magazine that has a distribution across the state, it's consistent. And that's that consistency that starts to drive brand, drive message. And so we've all three been working together, Vision Marshall Town Chamber and the city, to make sure that we're all on the same page with this and who's doing what. And so Vision Marshall Town's really taking on the role of that internal community pride. The chamber is taking on the role of getting a message outside of the boundaries of Marshall Town to the larger region about who we are in Marshall Town and what we're doing.
More public comment?
Anna Wolvers again, and no, Mark. And I did not talk ahead of time, but I had questions of wayward signage is already in the plan that's been talked about of the downtown master plan or the Park and Rec plan for the meetings I've been to. I remember about this time last year, Val Ruff gave a nice, I don't know, 25-page pamphlet advertising Marshall Town. And that's how I found out we had like 62 restaurants in the community. Social media is very, very cheap, in fact, free unless you pay to promote an ad for 16 bucks or something. And we're already doing the what's happening on the weekend post. Although I know some activities aren't there because they don't go through the chain of command or through the chamber or something. But that's a great way to get the same message. And I guess I'm not seeing a difference in the tagline that was voted, except for I think it's always been a place to live, work, and play. And now I heard the word "learn." So I'm not sure why that much money is needed to do basically what's already been done.
Other public comment?
Karen Ablow, 109 North 21st Street. As I listened to Ms. Leisure, for clarification, did you state that in your example that when Jeff went to a convention or whatever, he would rent the banner from the chamber?
Just to reserve it.
Reserve it?
Yeah, just calling and putting his name, not buying or not paying for it.
Okay. Because that was my question. It, when, when I heard that, I thought, so there would be additional cost beyond this? No? Okay. Thank you.
And the audience can't hear the answers and that it was, it would be just reserving the banner, not renting it? Other public comment? Roll call.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Would you read the next resolution, please, while unable?
Resolution of support and financial commitment for the Marshall Town Iowa Main Street Program.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any staff comment?
Yes. So this is a separate item from Resolution Number 10 on your agenda, which is the resolution putting the actions from the last meeting into place. The, basically the Marshall Town Central Business District is up for their two-year renewal with Main Street Iowa. And so the Main Street Iowa Agreement, which does require that the city financially support the Marshall Town Central Business District, is what is in this item here within basically the resolution guiding that support in item number 10.
Comments or questions? Public comment?
John Catrin, 202 South Third Avenue. Is this for financial commitment? How much money are we talking?
That'll be discussed in item 10.
Jessica, could you share some of the benefits that we have gained from being a Main Street community?
Yes. Certainly prior to the tornado, there were a number of benefits that Main Street provided with, you know, providing individual assistance to property owners within the district and providing renderings for facade improvements and different things, as well as then providing just a, a whole host of resources on a variety of, of things occurring in your downtown area. Since the tornado, we have seen that it is this Main Street designation that has helped us secure funding from the state. Currently, we have a million dollars that has been sort of granted to us for us to sub-grant out to other, or to projects in the Marshall Town Central Business District. And so that is definitely one of the things. We were given free technical assistance for nearly a year with a historic architect, who also worked with the MCBD and many business owners in the downtown area as well. And that's really just the, the tip of the iceberg. There's been a number of other resources that I think have been brought our way since the tornado as the Iowa Economic Development Authority has realized how impactful this event was to the health and well-being of the Marshall Town Central Business District.
Thank you.
Other questions by others who have not, or comments by others who have not yet approached on this, on this resolution?
Nate McCormick, 1904 Bailey Drive, also the president of the Marshall Town Central Business District. So this particular resolution is required by the accreditation of the Marshall Town Main Street Program to be part of our, both our state and, and our national programs. It does not fix the dollar amount of the support, right? All they're doing is they want to make sure that we are a, it's really a partnership with the city between our volunteers, our members and business owners and the city itself. So that, that's really all we're, all we're talking about for this particular one.
Thank you. Other public comment? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. Next resolution, one able.
Resolution approving engineer's statement of completion and accepting the police and fire traffic signal improvement project final cost of $67,480.
I move for approval.
Second.
We'll go with Isom on the second. Staff comment?
Um, I, I was gonna say Justin's not here to offer anything, but I think this is just, uh, the project is completed and it's basically the engineer's statement of completion.
Any questions or comments up here?
This is the light on South 6th Street, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I understand it did have to be adjusted. One, one of the vehicles had a, a lower beam or whatever, and, and so they had to change it so that any emergency vehicle would trip the light off. But I think they've got that done now. Any other comments up here? Any comments out in the public? Roll call.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, that one carried as well then. Uh, Resolution Number 7, please.
Resolution approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project painting for Heartland Finishes increase of $13,241.20.
I move for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion?
I, I don't know if Ethan has anything to offer or if there's any questions for Ethan.
Any questions up here? Or any questions from the public? You're off the hook so far, Ethan? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Yeah, and for those in the public that are watching on TV, they, they won't know Ethan from, uh, Adam. Uh, he, he was the main project manager here for Story Construction. And I gotta tell you, Ethan, now that you're back here, just how fun it has been to watch people go through that building and the comments that we're getting from it. So thank you and thank you to your bosses at Story Construction. You bet. Next item, please.
We're at item number 10. Resolution approving amendment to agreement with Marshalltown Central Business District.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Yes, so this is basically the continuing item from the previous resolution, um, that, uh, required the financial commitment. And, um, Bob Johnston, who is our attorney for urban renewal things in Des Moines, he wrote it as an amendment to the current agreement because we do have an existing agreement, um, for, with the MCBD for, uh, $30,000 for this current fiscal year. Um, what's in it for next fiscal year, uh, for the fiscal year starting July 1st of 2020 is $32,000. And then also within this, um, amendment contains the designation of, uh, incentive grant funding for this current fiscal year, which, um, puts another $20,000 into that, um, pot of money. And then for next fiscal year, $40,000.
Questions or comments about this item up here? Public comment or questions?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. MCBD is a 501(c)(6) organization. The c6 designates it, it's a Chamber of Commerce group. Um, I don't know, but it's, would seem prudent to package all the Chamber of Commerce groups together and make this organization fall under the Chamber of Commerce so that we can just fund one organization and reduce all of the overhead of council votes and staff work and focus everything within that Chamber of Commerce group. This Chamber of Commerce group requires memberships from the Main Street Partnership area, which takes away membership dues from the Chamber of Commerce, which we are also funding. So it seems like they're in competition with each other. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Nate McCormick, 1904 Bailey Drive, President, Marshalltown Central Business District. Um, so this particular resolution, there's two pieces, right? Uh, the first piece is the continuing support from the city, um, as, as Mark mentioned. We do have, uh, two, uh, two organizations, a 501(c)(6), 501(c)(3) for various reasons. The work of the Marshalltown Central Business District is really focused in downtown and particularly historic renovation. And that's really what, what separates us from some of the other economic development and, uh, Chamber of Commerce-type organizations, uh, both in the community here and of course around the, around the, uh, state. Um, we have different, uh, different lines up with organizationally, um, up through Iowa Economic Development for the, for the Central Business District. The other piece? This is Cameron McCormick also, 1904 Bailey Drive.
Does he get rebuttal?
This is on the record, right? Um, but, uh, so the other one is, uh, is, does not go to the Central Business District, right? Those dollars are going, uh, directly to our, uh, building and business owners who are doing renovations to beautify and, and improve the downtown. Um, we get tremendous return on investment for that money I mentioned, uh, two weeks ago. But, uh, for about $116,000 in total city contributions, we've had over a million dollars of, uh, of private donation or private, uh, excuse me, investments put into the downtown. So significant return on, uh, on that particular program. And I'd really encourage you guys to, to consider both, uh, both funding it for current needs and also looking to the future as a, we will no doubt need, need more in there to, uh, help recover through the tornado. Thanks.
Thank you. And that Cameron is one cute prop, I gotta tell you. Other, uh, public comment? Let's vote.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, that one carried as well. Would you read the last, uh, or the next item?
We have a public hearing followed by a resolution approving a development agreement with Jose Angel Regalado, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Very good, let's declare the public hearing is open right now. The time is 6:28. Uh, has the clerk received any written comments?
I have not received any written comments.
Time for public comments.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I know everybody's trying, getting tired of me up here. So, uh, TIF agreements, um, and there's some negative TIF involved in this agreement. And this agreement does not include any requirement for jobs. It was sold to include 100 jobs, but that's nowhere in this agreement. So I guess we don't have to hold them to that. Um, but TIF money handicaps all other taxing entities. It takes the incremental TIF or property tax amount and puts it in the city's control and takes it away from the school system. It takes it away from the county and all those other taxing entities. Um, there's negative increment on here because the assessed value of this property, now $52,000, is less than the assessed property in 1998 when the TIF district was created. Over the life of this project, it will cost the ci, the school system $345,000 and the city $290,000 approximately. I've heard it said by many people that this is money that those entities wouldn't have had had this project not existed. And my argument to them is that if your boss doesn't give you a job next, or a raise next year, that's money you didn't have, so it didn't negatively impact you. So if that's the way we want to think about it, okay. But I don't think that's really the way it works. Thanks.
Other public comment? Staff review?
But I just want to point out, we do have, um, Mr. Regalado here tonight, if you do have any questions for him, um, that he is available to answer those. Um, yes, I do want to talk about this and bring up, um, one of the items that I had, uh, put in the packet last week when we set this, um, because it's, it's, uh, important to understand, this is not giving him a cash grant of $850,000, that this is based purely on incremental taxes and what this looks like. And so, um, what, how we do these calculations to figure out what that not to exceed number should be and over what period of time is really looking at what a, a new assessed value would be, coming up with the, uh, new taxable value, looking at the frozen base value, which as Ms. Eaton said, it is negative right now. Uh, that is not a good thing for our community. And I think Michelle had pointed out, we have 20 parcels in the downtown that have a negative, um, TIF base value to them. And so that's not a positive. And we should be trying to do anything we can to fix those things where, where we can help, um, with that. And so, um, kind of what I've done is based on, you know, estimated tax rates, estimated values and things, um, come up with what the total tax would be and then what the incremental, um, tax would likely be paid on an annual basis over 10 years. You'll notice that I don't factor anything in, therefore the assessed value, um, increasing over time, which we typically know that that's likely to happen based on, um, and then a reassessment every either two or four years on commercial properties. And so that's ultimately how the not to exceed number of $850,000 was come up with. The more important thing to focus on is not the $850,000, but the 100% for 10 years. Because that means that, yes, that anything that would be incremental taxes, 100% of that would be rebated back to the Regalados, um, after they had paid it. And so that's, that's the most important thing to focus on as part of this. Uh, Mr. Regalado is making a $3.6 million investment in downtown Marshalltown and building a, a building, um, that is going to be a bigger square footage than what he had to take down. Um, ultimately, this agreement is not based upon jobs. He provided that information in a different grant application. All of this has been based on value and what you see before you in the calculations here. And so, yes, there's certainly a difference between 850 to 782, um, given that I don't build in any of the extra things that we know are likely to happen. That's where we try to round up a little bit for that extra cushion. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the, the figures and how we came to that. Um, and then I'm sure that Mr. Regalado would be happy to answer any questions you might have about his project.
Thank you. Any council comments?
Could I ask, uh, Mr. Regalado, how many people did you employ before the tornado?
Crystal Regalado, 106 West Englewood Street. Um, I'm his daughter and on behalf of him, I will be speaking. He did say that he did employ, uh, approximately like 30 employees before the tornado and that did not include family members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments by the consellers? Any public comment?
Nope, no more public comment.
Oh, we don't have?
We already did that.
Oh, we did that? Yep, I'm sorry. We already did the public comment, sorry. We went from that to then staff review, council comments. And at this time now, I declare the public hearing is o, is over and the time is 6:33 PM.
We have a resolution approving development agreement with Jose Angel Regalado, as described in the public hearing.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion up here? Any public discussion? Let's call a roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good, carried, thank you. Let's move on to item I, which is the bond public hearings and resolutions.
Yes, Your Honor, we have three public hearings and three resolutions regarding borrowing for the following upcoming year.
Would you read the first of those then, please? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I got to declare the public hearing is open on that and the time is 6:35. Did you receive any, uh, comments from the public, uh, the clerk's office?
So this is the public hearing regarding the resolution expressing intent in determining to enter into a general obligation essential purposes loan agreement in an amount not to exceed $8,830,000. And, Your Honor, I did not receive any public comments, written comments, I mean, any written comments prior to this meeting.
Uh, next in the order of business for these public hearing steps is public comments. Seeing no one stepping to the microphone, then we go on to staff review.
Good evening, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Just gonna, um, pull up the memo here that I provided to you. So the $8,830,000 is, um, containing $3,230,000 for the refunding of Bond Series 2011, which basically means we're just refinancing it. We want to get a lower interest rate. And we're estimating to save approximately $77,000 in interest by doing this. And then the other amount that makes up this is, are these projects, starting with the Timber Creek Bridge replacement, West End Parks, East Merle Hibs Street, sidewalks, and Anson Park. So that altogether equals $8,830,000. Any questions? Thank you.
Just, Diane, I'm sorry. I'm always a little slow, I'm sorry. Um, the other two projects listed that are pulled out because they have to be approved separate.
A separate hearing, right.
That's why we're doing it in three steps.
Right.
Thank you.
Question here. Diane, would you comment on our borrowing situation? How it can impact our municipal bond rating? And the retirement of debt? You've done some work and we've talked a bit. I understand we were, are retiring no bonds this year at all. Next year, I don't remember if we are or not, are we?
So if you look in your official statement, it breaks out the maturities of the different debt. On page 17. Um, so our, our next debt item falls out Um, so our, our next debt item falls out off last payments in 2022. So the plan for this bond was to backload the payments. So there'd be more principal payments towards the end rather than at the beginning.
But it is four years before we drop, before we pay off the next bond that's due.
Well, this is fiscal year 20, so fiscal year 2022, 2022 would be the last ones. Um, our bond ratings, we have a, a call with Moody's tomorrow, um, based on our official statement, preliminary official statement. What they will be looking at is our cash balances, which have actually increased in our general fund from last year. And then, um, um, based on what the county has told us, our valuations will not be going down like we originally thought overall. We expect an increase there, which is good. And then all the development that's happening. So with all, with all that said, I do not expect it to change. We should be able to maintain our AA2 bond rating.
Just to remind you all of, of one thing that you did in this, um, for this fiscal year and for last fiscal year is we reviewed that cash reserve, um, that's to be, uh, 15% of, of our anticipated expenditures and, and that you, you put local option sales tax, council designated local option sales tax towards that, which is part of that cash balance, um, that Diana is referencing. And so that's why every budget cycle, we'll continue to talk about making sure that we have that, um, as close to fully funded as feasible to do within each fiscal year because that is such an important factor for us for one, long-term savings, but also how that appears to the outside lending world as well.
And they also look at your debt margin, which we are, we are within our 5% legal limit and we're also within our council designated limit as well. Did I answer all your questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, sir. I have a couple, if I could, please.
You may.
I am, um, I'm probably too conservative, but I, uh, I agree totally with re, with refunding the debt if we can get a lower interest rate on that 3.2 million. Of the remaining debt, there's a bunch of little projects. I think the Merle Hibbs $4 million, I'd like to drop that out just for the simple reason that we don't know where we're going to be in nine months with downtown. We don't know where we're going to be in a year. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done yet with, uh, with the tornado and I don't wanna, I don't wanna earmark the city to a point where we have to raise that 60%. I want some cushion in there, so I, that's a project that could be dropped out pretty easy. The Anson Park and the sidewalks and the east end, west end and, and the Timber Bridge, you know, that isn't very much money. That's only a million bucks about. Rather than, rather than having to do the 8 million, we can take it down a long ways and, and the two, the two others, we'll deal with them later. So I'm not in, I'm not in favor of the bonds being sold at the total, at a total debt. I'm, I'm in favor of us cutting a couple of projects out of there and making it so that the city still has a, a nice cushion of money that we can borrow from. Cause I think you told me after, if we went this whole thing, next year there was only 3.2 million left, right? Isn't that what you told me last time that we looked at this? And I don't want-
Are you talking about debt mar, debt margin? Okay. So before any of this happens tonight, we're about, about $8.5 million.
Okay.
The refunding-
Six of that, we're gonna use tonight.
The six, the 6.5 is what's on the agenda because the 3.2 is already included. Since you're just refinancing, we already had it.
That takes us down to 2 million left is all.
Right.
I think that's too close. Sorry, folks. I just don't like that.
One, one of the things that I will say about the East Merle Hibs project, just to encourage you about is it's been really taken off as this is purely an economic development project and that is truly not what it is. You're gonna have probably, um, sometime early next year, 46 new rooftops under, basically with one access point that pretty much dead ends off of either Second Avenue or Plaza Heights Road.
Yep.
That's truly what this project is about, is providing basically a secondary egress into a heavy, densely populated, um, area that currently doesn't exist now. And so as we did our staff review of these new apartment projects, we, we could not force a developer to put in a new roadway. There is nothing code related or within our, our requirements to force that. Um, but there was enough of a safety issue there, just given the number of multifamily residential units that you have in that area, um, that really forced this project to come forward. And so that's what I would encourage you to consider with that is that, um, before we would even have a project done, there are going to be those households that will be available to be rented. And just today, Michelle heard that, uh, they're, they're full. Their waitlist is overflowing and they're trying to look at new areas to develop as well, um, because those, those are basically units that are already rented.
I just wanted to add on the, going back to the debt margin, that after our May bond payments, then that will grow, grow again.
Other comments up here?
It'll grow to what? Estimated?
Well, if you finance everything tonight, you take off the $6.5 million off our 8.5 debt limit. Um, after that, that is what it is to, today if you bond today. We have payments due December 1st and June 1st. So then any principal payments would then increase our debt margin. If that makes sense.
I think when, when you talked about it before, I think we retire somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 million worth of general obligation debt on June 1st. And so that would then, if you want to do the math, it's basically that amount plus what would not be, um, used tonight, which is about 2 million. So then there's, there's about $6 million in, in that total, um, 60% threshold that would be available based on, on what we know now of valuations.
Clarification, Jessica. Conjoined the fact that we're not going to retire anything for four years. None of our bonds are going to be retired in four years.
Two years. Diana said fiscal year 2022.
But you're still making principal payments on all those as you go.
We still have a gap there, concerns me at least. I'd like to see a reorganization of the projects myself. Not that they're not worthy projects, they are. Not that they're not needed projects, they are. But the timing on it, I question. I'm concerned about going over a bridge that we can't get back on or makes it much tighter looking ahead at what we don't know. That's my concern.
Other consular comments or questions?
Your Honor, I just have a comment on, on the, uh, July 1 projects, uh, for, obviously in my third district or third ward, whichever, um, at a $2 million project for, that we just, uh, passed the engineering, uh, money for. And you want to talk about getting close to the, uh, our, our ceiling and you add that on in July 1 of, of $2.5 million. And we're not buying down that much in between now and then. And I think that puts that project in jeopardy.
Are you talking about the stormwater project?
Yes.
Isn't that paid out of stormwater funds?
Yes.
Yes.
It is, but you still have to borrow the money.
It, it doesn't impact our debt margin?
How can you do that?
Because it, because it's not kind of tied to the debt service levy.
Why can't we put that in a different bond?
So the, the issue with that and the right now is that we could only borrow 6.5 million this calendar year to hit that $10 million borrowing total because we had a $3.5 million SRF loan. That was the reason why we moved that one back to a later, because we didn't need those funds now.
I understand that, but you're still gonna, you're still gonna, uh, uh, impact, uh, taxpayer money.
Actually, that one is to come completely from stormwater fees and so it's actually, it's the stormwater rate payers that would be responsible for repayment of that debt.
Which is also a tax.
But not, not a property tax. It's, it's different.
No, I'm not talking about property tax. I'm talking about assessed, uh, fee.
Yeah, we pay stormwater fees.
Correct.
Right. We're just using that money to fund the debt.
Right. I'm, I'm looking at the overall picture of the impact on the community.
Okay.
That's what I'm looking at.
Is it projected that the stormwater assessment would increase due to the, using the stormwater funds for, for the, uh, Meadow Lane project?
No, there's funds accumulated that we can use to pay the principal and interest.
Yeah, and just, uh, we, we have not had a storm, an updated stormwater study, uh, for a little while. So that is something that we currently, um, are working with Stanley consultants who have done that previously to update both the stormwater and the sanitary sewer, um, as we haven't had any stormwater rate increase, um, since July of 2018 and no sanitary sewer since January of 2018, or 2019 with nothing planned for 2020. So those were two that needed to be updated. The, the approved rates that you had passed many years ago, like three years ago were, were completely done. So, and that's where, that takes into account, you know, how projects shifted from where we were, you know, four years ago to now and this, the, the Meadow Lane project, which was, I think was 2.6 million, would, would definitely be in that next round as we're, we're just about there. But we couldn't borrow for it or what, what was proposed to you, um, previously was not to borrow for it at this point in time because it was not at a point in time where we needed the cash on hand.
One final comment was, didn't you have a number of 58 cents a thousand? Isn't that where we were at for, if we did this bond issue that you gave us the other night?
About 56 cents. It would increase the debt levy by about 56 cents. So if you do not contribute any local option sales tax at all to buy it down-
Right.
Then a $100,000 house, it would be about $32 a year.
Okay.
But that's not likely because you consistently-
Is that over what we're already paying? Is that an additional $32?
For a $100,000 house, yeah. Assessed value. Not taxable.
Takes us from 90 some cents to a dollar 60 or something for the capital fund, right? For the bond fund?
Uh, this, this fiscal year, we're, we're at a dollar for the tax levy for debt service. So it'd go up to about a dollar 56. Again, there's lots of variables. We don't know our valuations for sure. We don't know what the interest rate will actually be when we do the bond sale.
Gotcha.
Other council comments or questions? I will declare the, uh, public hearing is closed and the time is 6:51 PM.
We have a resolution expressing intent in determining to enter into general obligation essential purposes loan agreement in, in amount not to exceed $8,830,000.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any further council comments?
Your Honor, is, are we able to amend that now? Since it's a, it's, um, it's an agreement? To do, to express, to issue the bonds, can we amend that number?
You can reduce it, you just can't exceed it.
Okay. I would like to amend, offer an amendment, please. And I would like to reduce it by the $4 million for the East Merle Hibs Boulevard project. I'd like to retain the GO bond refinancing and those four little projects.
Is there a second to that motion to amend? Hearing none. Uh, are there any further comments by the consellers on the pending motion?
I will second it, Your Honor, just to get it before us.
I'd like more description about what you're taking off.
The $4 million for the Merle Hibs Boulevard Phase 1.
Jessica, can you, um, share with us again just briefly what Phase 1 entails so we know exactly what it is we're asking to remove?
Do you remember what council meeting it was that we had? I'll, if I can find it here real quick. Yeah, so, so Phase 1, it's easier to show up on a map and hopefully Michelle can figure out which meeting it was that, uh, we had that graphic because it is much easier to see. So Phase 1 is basically, so I should start from the beginning. So we've contracted with McClure Engineering for the full design of connecting from the current terminus, um, right behind Walmart all the way to, um, Governor Road with Phase 1 being, uh, basically, uh, extending East Merle Hibs to what would be a north-south line to connect what would be South, um, Fifth Avenue, which would be a new roadway. So if you can think of the Plaza Heights, uh, um, road, uh, there, there needs to be a north-south road to connect that. And so that is what, um, Phase 1 of that project is. If you've been out there and you've seen, um, you know, what the terrain looks like, there's quite a bit of hillside, there's quite a bit of cutting back of hill, there's quite a bit of property that we would need to acquire, um, that would basically have no use for the project, but the owner does not want to leave it as a remnant parcel at this point. And so, yeah, so the purpose, and maybe I can pull up here on Beacon. To just give you a better, whoops.
So the Phase 1 includes the completed roads, not just the design of them or the, um, the other, uh, electrical and, and other issues. It would be the completed road to what you're saying is a, uh, South Seventh Avenue.
Yes.
Merle Hibs. Would it include the South Seventh Avenue?
No. No.
It would not include the South Seventh Avenue?
No.
Okay.
So it, it basically, it includes East Merle Hibs coming all the way over to here to what would, and what would be South Seventh Avenue. That is part of that $4 million figure as well. So it's basically making the connection, um, to the Plaza Heights, um, circle as it currently exists and making that connection right there. And so what doesn't show up on our GAS map because our parcel data hasn't been flown over and updated in a while is this large parcel right here is where Kading Properties is putting 30 duplex units. Um, this smaller parcel right here is where they have 16 going in. And so as we talk about 46 new rooftops, um, that's quite a bit of, um, additional residences. And to point out that these are all also multifamily properties that are within this area as well. And so it's a densely populated area, um, of, of rental properties and one where, as we were looking at this project, it was going to be adding that much more traffic, having to come down through Third Avenue off of South Ridge when the more logical and better accessible route for emergency personnel was going to be a new roadway that would be East Merle Hibs, um, Seventh Ave, or South Fifth Avenue connecting.
I just want to make it clear, it is South Fifth Avenue.
Yes, it's not Seventh.
Yeah, it's, it's Fifth. South, South Seventh is associated with the South Ridge property. Yes, you're correct. South Fifth Avenue, um, that basically would run directly north and south off of here.
Question. In the past, when Merle Hibs Boulevard was built, the subdivider built the road and we paid him for the extra oversize because it's a through, it's considered a, a collector's street. So it was built a little wider with a little, and the concrete was a little deeper, but we paid the difference, but he built it all. We didn't have to build any of it and we just paid him the difference. And I, so I don't know why this guy can't do the same thing.
Um, because they, they don't have to. Under our code, they have access to their property off of a public street and so that's, the, code-wise, Kading Properties is perfectly fine with what's available to them.
Okay.
And so it's just the way that this parcel has been kind of set up and how it is now developing that creates the current issues that we have. So there is no way that we, under our codes, could have forced the developer unless they wanted a public street in their parcel there, which they of course did not want a public street in their parcel. So, so that's where this comes in. It's, it's not even on land that they, well, partially, part of South Fifth Avenue would be on land that they own. Um, but ultimately, most of this is, is just connection that is not something that they own. And so we really have no ability to force them to, to do anything with making that East Merle Hibs connection.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. I will note too, if you recall back on the west side of Hibs when we had the connection to the cooperative housing development. We actually did have an extension piece that, um, we did put in.
Yes, we did. But the rest of it was all done by the developer.
During, during the Glenwood Park development, correct. Right.
I guess I'm a little concerned that we would not provide this access. We previously have provided access for the, um, the Kester Estates. We, we have agreed to do an egress or we have purchased that land so that we can do, build a road there for the safety of those, um, residents in that neighborhood. And so I'm concerned that we have equally, if not more, new housing going in in this area, yet we're, we're not wanting to put that egress in for them. I think in-
But we were told that they had to put that in, that we didn't force it, that they, it was their responsibility and the city didn't enforce the, the rules that were on the books. We were told anything over 30 had to have one and, but the city didn't force them to do it. Isn't that correct?
So any, if they were to put more than 30 units in there, then yes, there would be a fire code requirement, but their decision to put 30 units in there is their, and to not have to put in that secondary egress was purely a, their development decision. And I think all of us can sit here and think, why would we do, you know, why would we do anything different than that? And so that's where they weren't required to do anything, um, knowing that they needed to, you know, 30 was the maximum rooftops that they could put there. And so that's where we really have no, nothing under code to require them to do anything.
Amazing, yes.
Okay, I'm guess, I'm confused whether the "they" were talking- Okay, I'm guess, I'm confused whether the "they" we're talking about is the developers of the Kester Estates or the developers here in the plot that we're looking at.
The Kester addition has sixty-two houses in it, right? And anything over thirty, they're supposed to have two connections.
Right, okay.
The city didn't, the city didn't force them to do the second connection, and that's why we're doing it for them now.
So one of the things, it's all about what code you're under and when. And I think when we look back and when the Kester addition's final plat was approved, that the current fire code that requires the greater of thirty was not in effect at that point. So it was just simply what was the code at the time that that subdivision was approved. So I apologize, Sue, I was confusing things. But here is, this is not the most up-to-date graphic. We have one that is a little bit more up-to-date, but this was one that was presented back at the May twenty-eighth council meeting. And so this gives you the better graphic of what that first phase looks like in just making the connection with Plaza Heights Road. It is labeled Plaza Heights Road here. It is Fifth Avenue as a north-south street.
If we were to take that four million out, would it be reassigned at a later date? Is that what your thinking is, Mr. Lamer?
Yes. Yes, I just don't want to get us too tight because we don't know what's going to happen downtown. And if we get tight enough that we only got a couple, three million we can borrow, I'd rather borrow, borrow it and use it downtown because that's where our, our big tax base is sitting right downtown here. And if we don't take care of that, we don't have any tax money. So I, yeah, I wasn't saying that the project should go away. I'm just saying that we shouldn't be doing it now.
Can you tell me again what the timeframe for the apartments or for the building's construction is? I know you said-
Michelle, they're, I mean, they're under construction now.
And so I'm just trying, yes.
The duplexes that are being developed there in that area that Jessica pointed out, kind of this area and here, those are under construction. And I believe they're going to be, some of them will be leasing probably early in the year, I would imagine. So they're collecting waiting lists and stuff right now, but yeah, they're definitely under construction at this point in time.
And Phase One would be a twenty-twenty, like, summer?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty project?
The timeframe that this would be on would be to, the survey data is supposed to be done for what land needs to be acquired at the, sometime in early November. So that crops would be out of the field. We would be able to start negotiations with the current landholder on what we would need to purchase to make the roadway and then talk with the Iowa River Hospice House on what we would need to acquire from them to make that connection there as well. And so the idea would that property acquisition be completed by the end of the year. Design would be ongoing, you know, through the, kind of the winter months, and it would be out to bid probably in March with a, hopefully a end-of-two thousand twenty construction date.
And so any delay just basically adds a year on to that would be the minimum.
Right. I mean, especially when you think about the acquisition of farmland in this, is that there has to be some communication or something with the farmer that you really couldn't do any earthwork if he's planting crops in it, starting in two thousand twenty. You'd have to wait for those crops to be out or pay a premium to him for not being able to harvest part of those.
Other questions or comments by the counselors?
I would rather get, I would rather get that project done sooner than later. Phase One.
I'd like to review the proposal. Anytime I'm asking.
Can you explain, what do you mean by review the-
We have a proposal on the table, a motion, I believe.
Oh, the motion?
Yeah, seconded.
Lamer moved to reduce the total borrowing by the four million dollar East Merle Hibbs Phase One project to retain the geo-bond refunding and to keep the four little projects. Second by Martin.
Other questions or comments by the council before we vote?
Just so I'm clear, on the four little projects. Go ahead and read those off.
Oh, the Timber Creek Bridge replacement, the West End Park, the sidewalk gaps, and the Anson Park Shelter.
Timber Creek, West End Park, sidewalk gaps, and the Anson Park Shelter were the four projects. Okay. Roll call, Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
No.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Uh, yes.
Isom?
No.
Motion carried.
The amendment carried?
Yes, to reduce it by the four million dollars.
With that motion amended, let's discuss the motion as amended now. Questions or comments up here?
Can I clarify what our discussion point is now? What's-
It's my understanding of-
That we, yes, go ahead.
It would be to approve the resolution as amended, so minus the four million.
Are we ready for roll call?
Yes.
To approve the resolution as amended from eight million eight thirty to four million eight thirty roughly. Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
No.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
As amended. Okay, so we have another resolution with a public hearing. So a public hearing with a resolution expressing intent in determining to enter into a general obligation school district loan agreement in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
And we'll declare that public hearing is open now at seven-ten PM. Did you receive any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No, your honor.
Time for public comments.
My name's a public comment. Mine's very simple. My name's John Catrin, two oh oh two South Third Avenue. I thought the school system was a taxable entity on its own. Why is the city putting their nose into the school business?
Other public comment?
Common name tonight, Anna Wolvers, Marshalltown resident and employee of the school district. I support our school district. However, as a member and board member of the Splash for Life Committee, we went to all those park and rec meetings and the master plan. And we discussed concern when the West End Park tennis courts were tore down and replaced with a hundred and ninety thousand dollar footsall court. And we were told there was a plan affecting the school district use of that for the JV teams and stuff. But we were failed to be informed of the three hundred thousand dollars that that comes with. And our proposed splash pad since two thousand twelve was a proposed two hundred and fifty thousand that we've had no time and no interest in raising tax dollars for. So also, a lot of those people that live in this district have been impacted by a tornado and are trying to get basic necessities like utilities turned on. So I really don't think they're going to have thirty-five dollars per year on their tax increase either for that.
Other public comment?
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. Borrowing this money affects our debt limit. And so that puts us closer to the debt limit, which we're concerned about. And the school system is a taxing entity and can raise that tax themselves. So I think the school system should stand up and do their own work.
Theron Schudie, school superintendent and resident, five oh seven Craig Circle. Again, I'll reiterate what was shared at the last council meeting where I had an opportunity to present, and this will be in part answer to the first gentleman's question. I believe the school district, as well as the city, have been in partnership probably since the fifties as it relates to tennis courts. These particular courts that we're talking about, which are on high school property, the city and school district have been in partnership, I believe, since nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-two, I think, when that agreement was struck. It's a shared-use facility similar to other funds that we partner with as far as Pearl, that helps support the park and recreation programming, not a facility necessarily. To Mr. Lammers' point, the last time I had the honor of speaking, we're simply looking at trying to take care of what we have, which are eight shared courts, shared expense, city and school district, and to replenish the courts that were lost when West End was repurposed into footsall, which was a wonderful reuse at less cost than it would be to rebuild tennis courts. Those courts, similar to our current courts, were beyond repair for tennis purposes. They would have had to been milled down to the foundation if not redoing the foundation. So it would have significantly cost more. But what that did do was it lessened access for both, for our student athletes primarily and for residents of that end of town who now need to either go to Riverview Park for the one court that's there or to come to the high school to use six of the eight basically usable courts safely at the high school. So in context with what has been said earlier, I think you could classify this at three hundred thousand now and/or three hundred thousand after July first as a small project as the four that just got approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Staff review?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director, I don't really have too much to add. This has been discussed over the last three council meetings, so we're just following your directive. Again, you can always go lower, cannot exceed.
Thank you.
The one thing I'll add to that, which Dr. Schudie had mentioned, was this was originally presented as a contribution of seven hundred thousand dollars, which was what we could borrow without going over the requirement for a referendum. And so the way that we did propose this a few meetings ago, where this was something that had the remaining four hundred thousand dollars coming back to you in the summertime to complete that. So this was just really one portion that was present in the borrowing tonight.
Any other staff review? Time for council comments. I'll declare the public hearing closed now at seven fourteen PM. Is there a motion to approve it?
I move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion up here? Public discussion?
Lonnie Hoglan, nine oh nine Stegman Boulevard. It just looks like, as you gaze through the other graph showing the different disbursement of the money, it's a lot of things. Every one of them could be put on hold. There's a lot of other things that need to be taken care of in the community that are already problems instead of creating new things. Take care of some of those, please, and there's a reason I'm not on that council. I couldn't move at this pace. Good luck.
Any further comment? Roll call.
Martin?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Nope.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Motion failed.
On to the next item.
We have a public hearing followed by a resolution expressing intent in determining to enter into a general obligation railroad quiet zone loan agreement in an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars.
The public hearing on that one will be at seven sixteen PM. Have you received any comments, Madam Clerk?
I have not received any written comments.
Time for public comments.
John Catrin, two oh oh two South Third Avenue. I've lived in this community most of my life, and I've lived with the trains. I've lived within two and a half blocks of the trains, and I've never noticed them. My mother grew up within a block or two blocks of the trains, and a lot of other people from this community have done the same thing. Now, if I was complaining about the trains and I come up here and says, I listen to the trains through the walls of my house, you folks would tell me, well, then go insulate your walls, put new windows in. Well, this is the same theory I have for certain vendors in this community. The trains go through here at less than what they used to. I don't know what, there used to be a hundred or more or two, and they go through here, what, fifty or sixty? And nobody really notices them except certain individuals. So I just don't, I think it's just a large waste of money. I've had plenty of comments from fellow friends about the same thing.
Other public comment?
Karen Nable, one oh nine North Twenty-first Street. Bolton and Mink had presented the Federal Railroad Administration information. And in that, it states that there's no increase in safety between a quiet zone and a non-quiet zone. And again, our city is in a position where these monies could be used for needs and infrastructure. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Erin Strong, nineteen eleven Gethman Lane. I am also part of the Marshalltown Softball Association. So as you guys all well know, the South Sixth Street softball complex is right on the railroad tracks. We try to make it a very family-friendly environment and having, you know, being right next to a crossing and kind of close to a second one, having those train horns blare as we're playing is a safety issue. When you're trying to communicate during a game, you can't hear anything when those trains are going by. And sometimes they actually blow the horn longer just to get a rise out of us. And also, the family-friendly environment, I have a young son, and he covers his ears and kind of cries every time those horns go by. So in my opinion, it makes it less of a family-friendly environment, having those trains constantly blow the horn throughout our events. And we try to, we would like to have more musical events, but those also, those train horns also affect that as well.
Thank you. Other comment?
Anna Wolvers again. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, we did do a public survey. I was spending some time this weekend looking back at previous council meetings. I believe July, maybe twenty-second is when Bolton and Mink did their initial presentation on this whole project, which is where my comment that they did a survey asking about the public's opinion. And I've seen on social media, fifty-five percent of constituents that voted here say no not to- to spend the money on this project. So I would like to see the official survey results so that we can just see what the public said.
Raymond Starks, 116 West Main Street. I'm a pretty new member of the community. I'm very in favor of this project because to attract people to the downtown area, we need to make the downtown a place people want to live. To make the downtown a place people want to live, we need to not have horns blaring through town at 3:00 in the morning 18 times. So nobody likes regular pollution and nobody likes noise pollution, and that's something I think we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Tyler Johnson, 12 North 12th Street. I've lived in Marshalltown most of my life, and I've grown to ignore the train sirens and, or horns, and I live now closer to the Veterans Home, and I think the veterans' whistle every 7:30 and 12:30 is louder than the trains. And I think that we need to focus more on our necessities right now. The quiet zone's more of a luxury. Thank you.
Other comment? You're taking a chance now?
Yeah, we'll see. Nate McCormick, 1904 Bailey Drive. Just wanted to mention as, both as a, as the MCBD and also as a member of the Steering Committee for the Downtown Master Plan, I do think that we have certainly heard anecdotally at least that the train noise has affected some developer decisions as far as what they want to do downtown. It came up in the study as a recommendation of the Downtown Master Plan. So while it is a lot of money, and I certainly don't envy you guys' decision on this, I will say that there's probably some we need to keep on the radar. So even if the, even if the decision tonight is not to pursue this now, it is something that we probably need to look for as we're thinking long-term for the health and the continued development of the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Common sense statement. That's a common sense statement.
Diane Lewis, 1505 South Fifth Street.
I'm sorry, I'm losing my hearing, but I could not hear you.
Diane Lewis, 1505 South Fifth Street. If money were no object, this would be a great project. I sympathize with the people that are bothered by the noise, but I really struggle to see that in a community where we talk about quality of life issues, we're allowed to burn and pollute the air we breathe, and yet we're going to spend all this money for whistles. I'm not in favor of that.
Thank you.
John Catrin, 2002 South Third Avenue. I grew up here in the 50s, and the downtown area was bustling. This train has no impact at all on anything that goes up through town, and it's just, just a silly waste of money to me. Money comes awful hard, and apparently to some of you it don't. I've watched you on TV and so forth, and you're very liberal with money. I think you really, really change.
Jeff Linton, 2007 South Fifth Avenue. As far as the money on this, I just think that if we drove around our community, I think there's a lot of other areas that this money could be better spent. I think it would be on the list of nice-to-have things if you're down the road, but I think right now there's more pressing matters, so I'd encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We've already had the public hearing.
Sorry.
We've already had the public hearing. We are...
No, we, this would be staff review time in the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So just to go over, this is its own separate hearing because it's using a different authority to borrow the money. It is considered a general corporate purpose rather than an essential corporate purpose, and so that is why it is a separate item in and of itself. There are a few things I do want to mention, which were somewhat echoed in the public comments, that this does relate directly back to recommendation number six of the Downtown Master Plan, and was something that was discussed quite a bit throughout the Downtown Master Plan process. So that's why it's here before you. The comment that this was, is not something that improves safety at intersections is something that I think we have some evidence to say that that's not true, because in 2017, a person drove around the gates and was killed when struck by a train in a vehicle. And so ultimately, what this does is it puts medians in place, or that's what we're proposing, and that's what we'd be proposing to the FRA, is to put a median in place to not allow people to drive around the gates. And so that is certainly a safety improvement that does not prevent a motorist from entering railroad right of way once those gates are down. So ultimately, it's before you here tonight, if this were to move forward, this would be something where the next step would be a meeting with the Union Pacific Crossing Team, I guess is what they're called, or Crossing Consultant to get the project started if it were to move forward.
Thank you. Any other staff reviews? If not, time for consular comments.
Got one question. What, in this proposal, what is Second Avenue status?
You mean Second Street?
Second Street, excuse me.
So if this were to move forward here tonight and you were committing to, you know, putting the funding in that, that would be a discussion that we would be having at the next meeting. Ultimately, what, there was no decision made. There were two options that were presented to you, and that's still a decision that you would, you would need to make.
But if you close, or make that Second Street a safe zone, you would raise the price by 100 and some thousand, correct?
So what is included here is basically the, the cost of closing the intersection, not to keep the sidewalks through. The sidewalks can be paid for for Road Use Tax Fund, which the, the portion of the project that we're not needing to borrow is sidewalks and street improvements that would be coming out of Road Use Tax. And so those increased costs would be basically borne by a different revenue source than what we're talking about here. So that's where the decision of whether Second Street is open or closed really had no impact on how much money needed to be borrowed to pay the improvement costs in the railroad right of way to the Union Pacific.
Other council comments?
I think this has been a difficult piece to, to think about. If we were just living the status quo and happy with where we're at in our downtown right now, I think that I would be with you, that, or that I would say, no, this, this is not at all anything that we need. But we completed a study for the Downtown Master Plan. We've looked at a number of ways of how we can increase folks who live downtown, folks who go to Mr. Regalado's grocery store downtown, folks that go to the grocery stores and the restaurants downtown. I, I know this is a lot of money, but I'm trying to look at it long-term. If it could promote more development downtown, more people downtown that are, again, eating in our restaurants, shopping in our stores, then I think it's, it's money well-spent. I'm afraid that we have done a lot of this work promoting the facade changes and the new businesses to come through, and we've designated money and grant funds for those. I think we just, if this is a barrier for people to move downtown, as we have, have been instructed through the, the Master Plan process, then I think we've got to try and get rid of the barrier.
Thank you. Other council comments? Ms. Martin?
Let me give you my perspective on this. Timing is a lot of what we do. There are advantages to doing things right now, and there are some advantages, of course, to postponing and amortizing our expenses. We do that through bonding, yes. Not everything has to be done at once. We're just coming out of a pretty tough time for the city, for the people in the city. I'm not saying from my perspective that these projects that we've discussed over and over are not worthwhile. They are. Some are shorter-term than others, some are longer-term. I think it behooves this council, and this is where the buck stops, no place else, that we reason together and make some intelligent decisions about amortizing our expenses and watching our limits more closely.
Any other council comments?
Yes, Your Honor. So I act, I do see this as a long-term investment, too. We have talked about this for many years, and finally, it seems like all of, all of those things that need to line up have lined up. And so I don't, I think we could stand to close the Second Street Crossing, but I am willing to give up what I want for what the council said yes to when we looked at this issue before. So I think it's, I think now is the time, and just like, you know how nice Center Street is looking, we started that project with the DOT like four years ago. It takes a long time, and this one has taken a lot longer than that, and I think it's finally coming to fruition. So I think it's, I think it is the time to do it.
Thank you. Any others?
Just a general comment. I think that just because some of us are used to the noise doesn't mean that everybody should have to deal with the noise. In addition to that, I guess I just want to say that the, the train noise, I would agree, is not the only noise in town. I live on the far northwest side of town, and I can tell you, 11:58 on a Friday night with the, the tracks going is louder than the train horns from where I'm at. So I kind of struggle with a little bit that aspect. The part that I don't struggle with, though, is that this is a, this is a safety improvement to the crossings in the town. We already kind of decided to pass on $4 million from a safety improvement, street improvement combination, and so as we've delayed some of the sidewalk from a safety improvement structure, too, I don't want to continue to ignore safety as a fundamental piece of projects, and I think it needs to stay at priority. So since we've already kind of decided to pass as far as the East Merle Hibbs, I think, continue to ignore the progress of some of the safety improvements of Marshalltown, it would not be a good idea.
I will admit, we had a wonderful wedding, and four of my siblings stayed downtown. The only complaint they had the whole weekend was the train noise. If there aren't any other council comments, let's declare this public hearing closed at 7:33 PM. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move for approval. I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
No.
Motion failed.
On to the next item.
Okay. So we have a resolution setting the date for the sale of bonds, Series 2019, approving preliminary official statement. So it would be just the essential purposes loan agreement minus the Merle Hibbs amount, so roughly 4.8.
And minus 600,000. So it would be 5,230,000 would be what we would ultimately, based on your actions prior, what we would direct our financial advisor.
How much would that be, Jessica?
Or 500, or, excuse me, 5,130,000.
Is there a motion to set that, or yeah, a motion to approve that resolution setting the date?
Yep, I move for approval. Would it just be 4 million? Wouldn't it just be the 4 million?
Yes.
4,830,000?
Yep.
Because the only one that approved, got approved was the first public hearing.
Yep, you're correct. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Could we have that total again, please?
4,830,000.
Okay, thank you.
And I think I did hear a motion, well, I guess now that we've clarified the amount...
You need a motion to set a date.
Yes.
You got it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Motion carried at 4.83.
Thank you. And on to the fifth and last...
A motion setting special council meeting at noon on Monday, November 18th for results upon sale and award.
I move for approval.
Second.
Anyone want to discuss this one? I wouldn't think so. Roll call.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. On to the next item, Jay, and that is ordinances. Would you read the first one, please?
We have the second reading of the ordinance rezoning several parcels from R2 Low Density Residential to M2. This is in the Edgeland area.
Edgewood area.
First, is there a motion to approve that ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
So Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director, this is one that we talked about at your last meeting. This is the three parcels included in the rezoning proposal, which are all city-owned parcels, so to the east of North Fifth Avenue and north of Marion, south of Woodland. Jessica's pulled up here, kind of gives a preliminary layout and design for, for that area. I just want to be clear that the ordinance specific is just to rezone the three parcels. That's before you. We would have a public hearing on this at your next meeting, which is November 11th.
Any questions or comments? Public comment?
My name is Michael Marquest. I'm an attorney, and I'm here this evening on behalf of my client Patty Martin, who resides at 817 North Fifth Avenue. Ms. Martin strongly objects to the rezoning that's being proposed. The parcels under consideration directly border her three parcels. If I could, I'd like to show an image if I can.
It's something that we have to do with the remote and the projectors, and so it's, I don't know that we've got it to work here recently.
Okay.
But it, we do have the map that I can pull up and zoom in on the area.
Yes, please. If you could zoom in on South Fifth Avenue. Yes, it would be at the intersection here of Edgewood Street and North Fifth Avenue. I'm sorry, I think I said south. Ms. Martin owns the two parcels immediately to the east of North Fifth Avenue and Edgewood Street. She also owns the parcel immediately to the northeast, so the southeast and the northeast. In between there is what's marked as Edgewood Street, and that property has actually been maintained by Ms. Martin and her husband until he passed away for over 35 years. They maintain this property by providing rock... They maintain this property by providing rock, by removing snow, by doing all the necessary efforts to keep it as passable as possible. As we understand the proposal, what this land is going to be used for is some kind of new industrial development and to allow pass-through, I believe, for the JBS facility. If you'll notice, the Edgewood area that Ms. Martin has maintained over all these years would then, I believe, based on the, what's proposed for the new streets in the, in this area, would be conducting a large amount of industrial traffic. And we believe that this is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for the city of Marshalltown. We believe also that it's contrary to the safety and security of the residents on Fifth Avenue. I'm specifically representing Ms. Martin's interests, but I would note that with us tonight are also many residents of the Fifth Avenue area who also strongly oppose this rezoning and for these purposes. That what is now agricultural and may occasionally have a tractor come through will become industrial, will have regular and steady industrial traffic that is not wanted in this residential neighborhood. We have children that are going to be playing in these areas. We have persons with disabilities who regularly use Fifth Avenue, which does not have sidewalk on either side in this area. These persons would be placed at risk if the traffic were increased in this manner. The residents, I believe, don't want to see this change happen, this rezoning. They don't want to see the development happen of these additional streets and additional industrial use of this area. I think they're not opposed to other considerations, but it's a dramatic change to have a largely industrial area so closely adjoining a residential district. Again, I think that's not in, in what was contemplated with the city plan. And I would respectfully refer the council to Chapter 414 of the Iowa Code regarding rezoning and regarding the comprehensive city planning. So for that purpose, for that reason, we resist the rezoning, would ask that it not proceed. And the reason you're hearing about this the first time at the second reading is because many of the residents, as they'll attest, were unaware of this being contemplated until they read about it in the newspaper after the previous reading of the ordinance. As I understand it, the signs that had been placed were placed up in Riverview Park, were placed very far to the south on Marion Street, and it was very unclear what was being proposed. And so that's the reason for the delay in registering a complaint.
I've let you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, they're coming.
Jeff Linton, 2007, South Fifth Avenue. I own a rental property at 305 Edgewood, and that's the reason I'm here. I'm, I'm concerned as well about the rezoning. I do own a property on Marion Street, and the property on Marion Street is considerably further back from the road versus my property on Edgewood. And I get complaints from my tenants that live there, I mean, they've heard them complain about it. The, literally, the trucks shake the house. It's caused damage that I've had to repair from the number of trucks going through, and the noise is terrible. And on Edgewood, the houses are much closer to the street, and so I'm, I'm very concerned and would oppose any change in zoning that would route all of those trucks past my rental property on Edgewood. Thank you.
John Cage from 2002 South Third Avenue. It was just a while back I was up here at a meeting with the poor guy from the pick-buying station that wanted to put it on 18th Avenue. And everybody got up here and carried on, but they never said anything about him. All they could do is gripe and whine about Swifts, and they have a right to. I could see you spending the money to put in a stinks farm for them so they could keep it quiet around here, but they don't. It just stinks down in there and so forth. And you don't do nothing about that. So you want to spend millions of dollars to put in another superhighway for Swifts.
Anyone else?
Robert Burr, 410 North Sixth Street. My family owns La Raza Taco Shop on 822 North Third Avenue. And my concern with the zoning is that going forward, this project, you know, comes to fruition like we're hoping, it's going to take a big chunk of our parking lot. The city, I believe, has an easement around 30 or 35 feet right in front of the restaurant. Concerned with our clientele having access to the restaurant. We have a, a drive-through on the north side, concerned about congestion, and just kind of wondering how we're going to resolve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Sandra Johnson, 902 North Fifth Avenue. I've lived there for 12 years, and I'm really concerned about all of the money that we have put into this home to make it a home. We put a brand-new basement walls in, which was $20,000. I'm very concerned about our home and our investment, and I ask you to reconsider this, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joslyn D'Orio. I live at 507 West Englewood, but I'm with my husband. I'm a business owner at 901 North Third Avenue, Cheeto D'Orio Masonry. And so I'm very concerned about that Edgewood getting widened. We've put a lot of money into the building. We have future plans to put more into the building and the parking lot. So I'm really concerned with the turn there, you know, big trucks making that turn off of Third Avenue onto Wedgewood, and then what the rest of that street's going to look like for the residents. I just think there's a lot to consider, and I'm really concerned about some of those things.
Thank you. The mic is still open?
So, Your Honor, I'm, I'm concerned about where the placement of the signs was and if people really didn't understand this project. It's a big project, and I like to give residents an opportunity to know what's happening. So I, I moved a table at just one meeting, the second reading, to the next council meeting, which I think would be...
So it would put to November 11th with a public hearing at November 25th?
Is that what it would do? Yeah. Yep.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
I second.
I don't know. I think maybe Martin was a little louder on that one. And that's a non-debatable one, so roll call.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
He's at his table.
We have a first reading of an ordinance approving the rezoning of parcel from R2A Low Density Residential to R2 Low Density Residential.
Your Honor, move to support.
Is there a second?
Was there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Once again, this is something we discussed at your last meeting. This is the first reading, as we had it as a discussion item on your meeting last, at your last meeting. So this is an ordinance to move forward with rezoning to the R2, which is a low-density residential. Currently, the property is R2A, which allows for single-family detached and single-family attached or a duplex. So this would allow for that shift to only be single-family in the R2. So this would put a public hearing at your November 25th meeting time.
Other, well, comments or questions up here by the council? Public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So this is a motion to restrict development and reduce our opportunity to sell this property, which we own as taxpayers. The concern driving this is that it may reduce property tax values in Mr. Martin's neighborhood. I live on South 10th Avenue. At 1001 South 10th Avenue, there's a dilapidated house that has been sitting there for 15 years. All of those dilapidated houses in the city reduce everyone's property taxes and our ability to grow. I don't think it's necessary to rezone this to R2 because anybody could buy it and develop R2 on an R2A property. And there are some very fine townhomes that have been built in many other neighborhoods, and it could actually, having multiple, multiple residents on there in high-end townhomes like on Edgewood, could eliminate a problem of multiple curb cuts onto South Ridge Road. So I think it doesn't really need rezoned until such time as we have some need to do that. Thank you.
Other public comment? What's, have a roll call.
Isom.
No.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Warren.
No.
Cahill.
No.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That takes us to item K on the agenda, and that's time for public comments, so I have to read another caveat to the public who may make comments on any item that is not on the agenda during this time. Again, the speakers approach the microphone, state your name and address. Comments limited to three minutes unless longer comment is authorized by the mayor. Direct the comments to the mayor and council as a whole. Consulors and mayor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public, and no action may be taken on the items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. The mic is again open.
Ebonner, 401 Orchard Drive, earlier, and I apologize that I missed it, but with the gentleman that's developing the grocery store, the only thing that I'd like to see is if we can have some clear processes and procedures that are placed out there so when they're looking at TIF development, et cetera, that it's clear and it doesn't appear to be a bias for one business or another. The other thing is, I would like to say, so this is my second piece, thank you, councilors, for listening tonight and listening to what our people are saying. I want to say a hand for all these people that have showed up. This is excellent that we've got so many people showing up. A common theme that I've heard is one of safety. I totally support safety. As you guys know, I am the co-founder for Splash for Life, and we'd like to bring up the fact that we would like to, again, bring to council the opportunity, and we will help fund putting signage along the river so children don't drown. We had one person die because of a railroad situation. That's horrible. But we've had five people drowned since 2012 in the river. Second piece with that, we'd like to start exploring the opportunity to develop the different sites with the splash pan, and we do need to, we're not asking for city funding, we're just asking for city to say, hey, we support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Just one more. Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. The special meeting or the council meeting tomorrow at 5:00. The chamber is holding a forum for meeting the candidates. It starts at 5:30.
Yep. We know.
Okay.
We expect to be there.
Yeah.
Other, other comment? Seeing nobody else standing or raising a hand, the meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM.